I'd like to welcome Ms Bernadette Lin, Secretary for Development and her team, for joining us in this session. This session is on the draft estimates on planning and lands as for the estimates on works. We will deal with that in the next session. I will first invite Ms Bernadette Lin to first make some brief remarks and then the floor will be open to questions. So members, please press the button if you wish to ask questions. Mr Lin, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. In 2023 to 24, the priority task on the land, planning and lands portfolio under the purview of the Development Bureau will follow the principle of enhancing quantity, speed, efficiency and quality. On enhancing speed and efficiency in increasing land supply, according to the supply forecast of developable land promulgated last year, the supply of spade-ready sites will reach 3,280 hectares in the next 10 years. Nearly half of the supply comes from two strategic development projects. The Northern Metropolis will provide about 1,300 hectares of spade-ready sites, while the reclaimed land at the Kowloon artificial islands will contribute about 300 hectares in the next 10 years. In addition to providing more than 500,000 new housing units, the Northern Metropolis is also the new engine for the development of innovation and technology and other industries. The government is pressing ahead with the relevant study, planning and development, and a number of new development area projects are under construction stage. We will soon commence consultation on the planning progress of the Santin Technopo, the flagship INT project in the region. Besides, we will continue to provide support to the Steering Committee on the Northern Metropolis and the Advisory Committee on the Northern Metropolis, chaired by the Chief Executive and the Financial Secretary respectively. We are making preparations for the establishment of the Northern Metropolis Coordination Office to strengthen the governance system for the Northern Metropolis. To tie in with the development of the Northern Metropolis, we will roll out progressively for tender free industrial sites in Yunnan and two in Hongqiu within this year to develop multi-story buildings for modern industries. It is expected that around 720,000 square meters of floor space will be provided. The developers will be required to set aside 30% of the floor space of these buildings to be taken up by the government so as to accommodate the brownfield operators displaced by clearance exercises. These are the pilot projects we're going to take forward. In this connection, we will conduct a market sounding exercise later this year, months, and then we'll be initiating the tendering process for individual sites. For the Kowloon Artificial Island project, I will go through this project when we talk about the works portfolio in the next meeting session. As regards the development of Chongkuanou Area 137 and 132, we are considering the views collected when consulting the district earlier on and in particular, the concerns about these proposed six public facilities in Chongkuanou Area 132. We will commence environmental impact and other technical assessments during which we will examine whether the reclamation area of this area could be minimized through slope cutting and some of the facilities could be relocated into caverns. Separately, with the support from the panel on development earlier on, we aim to seek funding approval from the Legislative Council within this year to kickstart the planning and engineering study for Longkutang Reclamation and Two Moon West area. It is hoped that the reclamation works could commence in 2027 or earlier. We will secure, well, we will go at full speed to provide spade-ready site for the production of public housing units. In the next five years, we will also secure land for the production of no less than 72,000 private housing units in the coming five years, which is of a scale nearly double that of the previous five-year period. And this figure does not include the supply coming from other private development projects and urban renewal authority projects. We are confident that the private housing land supply will remain steady and stable. On streamlining procedures, we're working closely with the Legislative Council Bills Committee on the scrutiny of the relevant bill with a view to seeking for its passage within this year as early as possible. Besides, we are currently reviewing several development-related administrative procedures. After tapping the industry's views earlier on, we will propagate the streaming, streamlining measures for aspects, including the procedures concerning the felling and compensatory planting of trees as well as processing of general building plan submissions progressively, starting from the middle of this year committed. The Buildings Department established dedicated processing units in March this year to expedite the approval process of general building plan submissions for high-yield private residential projects with 500 units above. We will formulate implementation plan for extending the standard rate approach for charging land premium to agricultural land in the new territories and regularizing the standard rates arrangement for redevelopment of old industrial buildings. We will introduce a bill into LECO in the latter half of this year to streamline the arrangement for extension of land leases. On building a livable city, well, the harbor front development is popular and we'll continue to develop a continuous and connected harbor front and high-quality public open spaces along both sides of the Victoria Harbour. In the next two years, harbor front promenades will mainly be developed in Kaolin, in particular, in Kai-Tech and Cha-Kua Ling areas. Works for the Rongdi Island Trail around Hong Kong Island will commence progressively from this year onward with a target of connecting 90% of the trail within five years. In addition, we are going to gather public views on how to amend the protection of the harbor ordinance in order to enhance harbor facilities. We plan to introduce the amendments bill into LECO in the first half of next year. Furthermore, we have earlier put forward some proposal for updating and streamlining the compulsory sale regime and enhancing the protection for minority owners. The public consultation exercise is in progress. We plan to submit an amendments bill in the latter half of this year to align the land registration system in Hong Kong with those adopted in other advanced cities. We will introduce into LECO next, early next year, an amendment bill for the implementation of title registration system on new land first. Thank you, Mr Chairman. That's a brief introduction. I hope you will see that the Development Bureau will be submitting a number of bills to this council for consideration. And also, there are various projects to create land that are in progress. Thank you, and we think, we hope we have the support of the public. Thank you. Nine members have pressed the buttons, speak. Mr Adrian Hong, Mr Chen Hafeng, Dr Priscilla Lam, Mr Michael Teng, Mr Andrew Lam, Mr Leitong Qu, Mr Frankie Ying, Mr Yu Park Lang and Mr Tony Che. Five minutes each, please. Mr Adrian Ho first. Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd like to follow up on PL 114, a question asked by Mr Leitong Qu. It is about the pilot project on a shared path for pedestrians and cyclists near the central pier. Now, have you kept statistics on hard count using this trail? And are you going to make this regular arrangement? And if so, have you considered the implementation details? For example, the capacity of bicycles, for bicycles on the shared path and whether people could bring their own bicycles? And also, does the government reserve any resources to link up with the harbor front promenade in the northern shore? For example, from Kennedy Town to Hang Fa Chuen, do you have plans to link it all up? If so, well, because there are several narrow sections along the shared path and that could cause danger to both pedestrians and cyclists. So for new shared path in future, would you set higher standard for the width? And also, would you do something to widen the existing narrow sections? Or in the long run, would you consider building casual tracks along the promenade and also provide more locations for bicycle rentals? So people could exercise by riding a bicycle? And also, we will turn Hong Kong into a bicycle-friendly area along the harbor front sector? Well, my colleague has answered the first question. And the second part of the question, that is whether we're going to link up the harbor front promenade. Actually, to the north of the Hong Kong Island, we have a longer section of harbor front promenade. Perhaps it's just the Western District and Kennedy Town where the sections not yet linked up because the roads there are narrower. So that's one reason why we are proposing to amend the protection of harbor ordinance because we want to be allowed to carry out a small-scale reclamation works to widen some of these paths without affecting the existing vehicular roads. Now, the member asked whether we could make the promenade wider. Well, it depends on the individual site constraints. Perhaps, say, by certain sections of the promenade, if there is still government land not yet put to use, then we will have more room for widening the section. But if there are already vehicular roads nearby, and we don't want reclamation, then there will be certain constraints. But in any case, we are more than prepared to listen to the views of the community so that where possible, we could allow shared use. But then in some communities, they do not like a shared use. That's why we stress the special, the unique features of each section so they have their own character. Well, in the reply, we have explained clearly that for this pilot scheme, it started at end of August last year. It will last a year. And in the process, we try to collect feedback from the public on the shared-use cycle tracks. So we'll wait, that is a trial scheme. So we'll wait for a year after the trial scheme is completed and then we'll analyze all the information feedback before we decide on the way forward. Thank you. Next, Mr Chen Hafeng. I'd like to ask about O18. Mr Visin Chan asked about Operation Building Bright. Now, for buildings older than 30 years, there are some 20,000 blocks. For most of these buildings with older than, or 30 years or older, most of them are in the urban areas. Some 7,000 blocks, actually, more than 1,000 blocks are in the urban areas. And then we have an urban renewal plan, but actually cannot keep up with the increase in the number of old buildings or aged buildings. So how can we make the most of the land to be reclaimed under the Kowloon Artificial Islands project? So then we have solid backup. That means you could move, relocate and then die this area to Kowloon. And then for the land made vacant in the urban areas, it could be used for redevelopment of older districts. So have you considered this option? And how many new units could you provide in Kowloon for relocation purposes? And then how can you redevelop the existing older urban areas, Secretary? Now, one of the stated objectives of the Kowloon Artificial Islands project is to provide land so that in the older urban districts in Kaolung and Hong Kong Island, then the space will be made available for redevelopment. But then we haven't yet come to the stage of formulating a detailed concrete policy. For example, in the existing urban areas, if we are going to have redevelopment, then how would we link this redevelopment to the development in Kowloon? Or will the governments set aside certain sites on Kowloon so that these sites will be for relocation purpose? But then for the Kenting purpose? So, but we have yet to consider it. But then we haven't actually worked on the actual implementation details, but certainly this is one aspect we have to consider carefully. Mr Chen, no follow-up. Next, Dr Priscilla Lam.
Thank you. I'm pleased to see these new plans from the Development Bureau. I want to talk about the harbor front and also the reclamation project. PL 055, a question from Mr Staney M. This is about harbor front development. Apart from the places listed, there will also be developments in Kaolung and Cha Kua Ling. For Kaolung, for Hongham, Chim Sato and West Kaolung, you can do more to improve the area. I visited Shanghai. Some years ago, we LECO members made a visit. There was a greening plan. We visited the waterfront area. There was extensive greenery along the waterfront with many kinds of plant flowers. So for our harbor front planning, I would like to see diversity. Can you set aside space for greening? Especially for the West Kaolung area, you'll be receiving overseas visitors. So we need the greenery. That's my first suggestion. I support the amendment to the protection of the harbor ordinance. We need to get rid of barriers so that we can do limited extent of reclamation for minor works. We've been pushing for another measure. We've been asking for a continuous waterfront on Kaolung. Now, for Tok Kua Wan, there's a plant. You need to do a boardwalk there, the Green Island Cement Plant. There's another problem with the Chim Sato area. Maybe there has to be discussions with the developer that you need to put boardwalks there for people to walk in the area. So if we're doing minor reclamation, we need to provide more greenery for people. This is something I would like the Secretary to consider. On improving water quality, this is another important point. For the West Kaolung Cultural District, there is a major improvement in the water quality. For our future development, we need waterfront that looks nice. Then we will have water activities, water taxis. So Secretary, can you talk to other bureaus too? There is the Environment and Ecology Bureau and also Transport Logistics Bureau. I'm pleased to hear about the plan about the Kai-Tech Cruise Terminal. There's a large site, but then the development cannot go ahead due to the contract issues. Water taxis are important. I would like to see connections with water taxis from east to west so that local people can take the water taxis in rush hours, tourists can take those taxis during the off-hours. The water taxis are there, but we're not making good use of the Victoria Harbour. So here are some suggestions from me. Secretary, can you take those on board in your next plan? There are plans for Kai-Tech and Cha Kua Ling, but for existing areas, you need to step up the work. Please be brief with your reply. I note the comments from the member. For pier improvement, you need landing steps for water taxis. Those will involve simple works. Amending the protection of the harbor ordinance will help us remove barriers and then we can work on these simple works. There are arguments that we can already go ahead with the works. We want to clarify that we cannot go ahead with those works because there's a high threshold under the existing system. We have to show there are insurmountable difficulties and there has to be overriding public interest to justify the works before we can go ahead. And we would like to be in a better position with the amendment of the ordinance. Next, Mr Michael Teng. Reply 058. I want to read out this part. "In the new territories, more than 1,600 hectares of brownfield sites, over 60% will gradually be developed for high-density housing and the usage to increase land use efficiently. Most of the brownfield sites will be redeveloped in the new development areas. We have also shortlisted 12 brownfield clusters with high development potential, which together with their adjoining land are expected to produce over 30,000 public housing units." So 12 brownfield clusters with high development potential for over 30,000 public housing units. For those 12 sites, are they recently identified or are they already covered in other new development areas? We had this engagement about land supply some years ago. Some progress has been made on various options. We have timetables, but for the brownfield option, no information. So are these sites recently identified or are they already identified, covered under the other options? If they're old sites, then how come we don't see a timetable? And if they are new sites recently identified, then I will commend your good work. The previous administration failed to find those sites. If these are new brownfield sites, then my question is, do we have a timetable for these sites? Mr Lin? Ms Lin? The 12 brownfields clusters with high development potential, those for outside the new development areas. The NDAs already have an impact on the brownfield sites, but these are, we're talking about the scattered slots. We found them over the last couple of years. We will be able to make use of them over the next 10 years for housing, for long, mid and long-term housing. So these sites are found after the engagement on land supply. Then I will commend your good work. You're being very efficient. Mr Teng is taking this opportunity to commend you for the work, Ms Lin. Chair, we talked about the 1,600 hectares of brownfield sites. We're developing on 1,000 hectares already. That's massive development. And we have to get it right with the brownfield operators. Over the next five years, we will resume 500 hectares of land. 700 hectares to be resumed. Much of it will be brownfield sites. So over the next 10 years, there will be major challenges. As I said in my opening remarks, there are multi-story buildings. We want them completed and we need more of them over time. For the 30,000 housing units, when will they see intake? Most of them within 10 years, within 10 years, that is. Mr Teng, you happy with the reply? I hope we can get enough workers to build those units. Next, Mr Andrew Lam. Thank you. Want to follow up on O27. The Secretary mentioned land reserve in her opening remarks. 3,280 hectares of spade-ready sites. They mostly come from two sources. First, the Northern Metropolis, the other 300 hectares from the artificial islands in Kowloon. 300 hectares of spade-ready sites. The reclamation will cover 1,000 hectares. 300 hectares of spade-ready sites, then there are 700 hectares left. So are the 700 hectares of land reserve? We are worried about something about the Kowloon Project. There are economic uncertainties. And we have also considered the government's fiscal position. And we're wondering whether we should proceed with the Kowloon Project, given its scale. So is it a case that it's all finalized for the 300 hectares of spade-ready site? And then for the other 700 hectares, you have to consider all kinds of future demand and circumstances and then decide whether to proceed? That's my first question. A follow-up question. For other kinds of land reserve, there's a database on land reserve. Is this a centralized database? I'm talking about a database for the entire government. So is it a database where the data sets from various departments are linked together so that the government can arrive on decisions after taking into account the future circumstances? Secretary, I would like to clarify a point here. For the supply of spade-ready sites over the next 10 years, I'm talking about the land creation project, the land that will come out of such project over the next 10 years. In October this year, and then we will have another rolling 10-year projection. For the Northern Metropolis and the Kowloon Project, going forward, the land to be created will be included in the new projection at that point. So we're not saying that land to be created after the 10-year forecast now will be left aside. By land reserve, we're talking about that in the context of the demand. We did a 2030-plus study. In by 2048, we will need more than 6,000 hectares of land in Hong Kong. We wanted to have 7,000 hectares of land. So people are wondering, why would we need 7,000 when we were just talking about 6,000 hectares of land? We talk about reserve because we need more land than what we forecast that we may need. And we're not pointing to a particular slot and designate that site as land reserve. And the second question on the database. Chair, on the database, we want to do annual updates to the database so that you can see what happens over the next 10 years. Then there are projects under planning. In the various controlling officers' reports, you will see projects being planned. Once those projects come to a more advanced stage, the departments come to the LECO for funding and those sites become spade-ready sites. Chair, a quick follow-up action. The reply says that you can make changes in the light of unforeseen changes in the future. So the question is, how do you make adjustments in the light of the circumstances that come up in the next 10 years? Chair, the permanent secretary can tell us more on this. Mr Doris Ho. And we have identified 7,000 hectares of land. We prioritize the sites and then we do the studies. And then we establish the feasibility with the sites. And then we come to the Finance Committee for the funding to go ahead with the works. We have to first establish the technical feasibility with the works. Some departments want to find land for their project. In that case, the development can, the bureau can address the demand quickly. Next, Mr Leitong Qu. Thank you. DEVBPL 114, that's my own question. D E V B P L one one four. That's my own question. This is about the Round the Island Trail. It's a question about the shared path between pedestrians and bicycles. This is a proposal I support to give people a pleasant environment. But I'm also concerned about safety issues when you have the same path shared by cyclists and pedestrians. There's a district council paper from the C E D D. This is about another shared path. The C E D D recommends six to ten meters wide path outside electrical complex. A tether walk at the shared path. It's a very narrow path. When you have both pedestrians and cyclists, there are safety risks. So my first question is, now what can the government do to address those safety risks? Has the government assessed, once you have an accident, what will the legal liability be for the government? Under the existing plan, people have to get a bike through a mobile app. That arrangement puts a cap on the number of bikes on the path. So if you have, when the demand is greater than the bikes available, then some people won't be able to get a bike. So under the existing plan, can people bring their own bike to the one kilometer shared path? Will there be restrictions on the number of bikes allowed at any particular time? There are media reports saying that the transport department may legalize unicycles and e-scooters by the end of this year on shared path with a maximum speed limit of twenty-five kilometers per hour. When you have a shared path and you have all those scooters, unicycles, you get greater safety risks. If the mobile app is gone, what can the government do to ensure the safety of the users of those paths? My last question is, this trial scheme takes, costs more than twelve point two eight million dollars. There, it covers public consultations and studies, et cetera. What kinds of public consultation is covered? How can the government gauge a wider scope of public views? There were complaints about public consultations. The criticism was that the consultation was lopsided, they focused too much on the cyclist while disregarding the views of other people. Secretary, is the C E D D going to take this? Mister Fang from the C E D D will tell us more. Thank you. For some sections on the path. There are existing facilities, so there are constraints on the width. So some sections may not be able to meet the six to ten meter requirement. So we do a one-year pilot to see how to take forward the project. On a cap on the number of bikes on the path. This is something we want to ascertain through the study. For this trial scheme, we want to make greater use of technology. We want to look for ways to minimize collision risks between pedestrians and cyclists. There's ongoing work on the public consultation. We're collecting public views. This is a one-year pilot. We engage a non-government organization to help us run the scheme. We have been receiving public comments about their experience with this path. When appropriate, we will go to the district councils. We do a full review and brief the district councils on this. I will stop here. Thank you.
Next, Mister Frankie Yeh. Thank you, Mister Chairman. When the secretary answered Mister Michael Ten's questions, you mentioned that um in the coming years, you're going to resume greenfield sites en masse. And you men- mentioned that there will be huge impact. Yes, I totally agree. I'm back, actually very concerned about it. Now, Mister Michael Ten commanded your efforts, saying that it's good that you're able to find, uh that you'll be able to find replacement sites. But I dare not say that yet. I haven't, have yet to see the list. Uh, we don't know what the scale of those replacement sites are and where they're distributed. Perhaps when I see the list, I will commend you to. Anyway, we have a meeting looking at these issues. Hope hopefully then you could address the um, the problems faced by the logistics sector in Hong Kong. Now, I'd like to ask about one oh two. Because of the pandemic, the government wrote out a number of measures to support businesses. For example, waiving short-term tenancy rent and also uh suspending um the re-tendering of such sites until the thirtieth of June. Now, we know, of course, there's enough resumption of normal boundary travel. But still, the lot, the sector faces huge difficulties. There is a substantial drop in export volumes. So the revenue businesses are struggling. We are grateful to the financial secretary. He announced in the budget that there will be waiving of the rent by six months till the end of twenty twenty-three. But there's no mention as to whether there will be retendering of the short-term tenancy sites after that. After the thirtieth of June, the government's replies that at an appropriate time, they will formally again um planned for retendering of these sites. But then um I, we, we, we've learned that for certain sites, there will be retendering um uh as notified by the highways department. Now, but some sectors are concerned. They, they have suffered for three years. Now they are starting to see business coming back. They would like to make some money first before they return the sites to the government. But now they're told that the sites will be retained as soon. So um since you're going to waive rent till the end of the year, could you also only do retendering at the end of the year? Secretary, well, for this session, all, all I can say today is that we are prepared to consider it. But then there are different uses and uses for short-term tenancy sites. We can not defer retendering indefinitely. It's because of the pandemic, we have extended um short-term tendencies when they should have expired. And then, but then there are other new users who may want to use the size and then they are now kept out. So maybe it's not possible for us to have across-the-board suspension of retendering. Or, and it's hard for us to say definitely when we could defer retendering till. Because maybe then there'll be scenario where there will be a large number of S C Ts and um you know, being put to the market for retendering and that could cause confusion to the market. But of course, for certain sectors, perhaps we could exercise this question and you know, extend the retendering till a bit later, we'll consider it. And what about brownfield sites? Any response, please? Well, there's no need to give a response unless wait till we have the list. I will study the list. And but, but of course, we hope that you, with your support, we'll be able to approve all the plans as soon as possible. If I could briefly respond here, Mister Chairman, we have stated openly that in the first quarter, we will have a list. By a list, we, that means we are going to list out different sites in the new territories. So it's easier for people to apply to use these sites for temporary industrial uses. And it will allow the relocation of certain brownfield sites. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, we are taking a bit longer than expected, but then uh we will still go through the time planning process because according to guidelines, um they have to go through the, uh, some of the guidelines have to go through the time planning board. In fact, the reference paper has been issued today. Uh, after the time planning board has a discussion, we will come back to report to the reference panel as soon as possible. Next, Mister Perry Yu. Thank you. I'd like to follow up on my own question. Uh, O five one. If it's W O, uh, D E V W B W O five one, well then it's the next session. Oh, sorry, I quoted the wrong number. Anyway, it's about heritage conservation. I must commend the antiquities and monuments office because I was involved in um you know, in helping to arrange a certain um tours for, for local heritage sites. And helped me to learn about a lot more about these, our own heritage sites. It seems that we have a wealth of treasure, but then they're not put to good use. For example, the high, uh, former high, the facade, you know, of this former mental hospital at High Street um is favorite, favorite photo spot, but then it's closed, the door is shut and no one could enter it to it. And then and then another heritage site in San Juan, that, that, it's all fenced up. So it's not possible to even take photos nearby. And then Chongqing Hall. The, the observation post at Maoshan is a grade one historic building. Again, it's all fenced up and earlier on, there was a security guard and now that's gone. Why am I quoting all these examples? Because for government-owned monuments and historic buildings, uh you will only play a supporting role if certain departments want to use them. But if no departments indicate they wish to use the size, then these sites will just be fenced up. And then you will only do some basic maintenance. Is there a better policy, really? So the development bureau could consider ways to make better use of these monuments. And under the revitalization scheme, we have seen a number of good projects. They've become very popular destinations for local residents as well as overseas visitors. Now, some of these facilities are open to the public, but not actually to travel agents. In other words, travel agents cannot lead the two groups to these sites. They cannot make bookings in the name of two groups, but rather only nonprofit-making bodies may be able to book guided tours. I don't think that's reasonable. So as you revitalize, uh, under the revitalization scheme, would you include um, um requirement that they must open up the facilities to the public for so many hours a week? And so there should be specific clauses. Otherwise, the NGOs running the facilities will um like they own the facilities and then the public and visitors are not able to enjoy these facilities. So could you consider that more in future? Well, actually, heritage conservation is for the next session, but perhaps the secretary could respond to this question from the point of view of planning. Now, one of the considerations in relation to Mister Yu's question is that, say, there are certain um, uh, you know, um, conserve facilities under the ownership of the government, or even if they're private monuments, they, they uh, the government is taking charge for the repair of these facilities. And for all these facilities, they ought to be open to the public for a certain number of hours, especially during the weekend. So it doesn't matter if the visitors are local residents or two group members and so on. They should not be kept out of these facilities. So perhaps my colleague will follow up on you. We, we've made to make that clear. We shouldn't, there shouldn't be any differential treatment for visitors outside of Hong Kong when they just want to visit these facilities. And then you mentioned other monuments. Well, they are not for used by, uh, they, they're not, you know, they don't have any active uses. But maybe there is a certain um, um monumental value, for example, like a fort or so on. So I agree, we shouldn't just fence up all these facilities. There should be some sort of um um, intro, you know, introduction plaques and so on. But anyway, on the question you mentioned, definitely I'll follow up on that. Thank you.
Mister Tony Tei. Chairman. I want to follow up on replies. Eight oh, oh eight four. And old eight two. I'll start with eight old four. This is about the Joint Office for the, for Investigation of Water Seepage Complaint. This office has been around for some time. Secretary, would you review the results of this office over the past three years? From twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two. Nearly thirty thousand complaints were received each year. In fact, nearly forty thousand complaints each year. Roughly three hundred million dollars went to the work. Would you review the effectiveness of the office? Has the source of those seepage been found? Doing that may not be enough to resolve the issue. So many residents and property owners are worried. Will there be an in-depth review about how effective this joint office is? So that's for the joint office. This is a question about the electronic platform to process building plans. There are different stages. Stage one. Few submissions, electronic, a hundred and nine plans. But then, three thousand four hundred fifty-nine plans were submitted on paper. The reply says there will be publicity this year. The electronic submission hub was launched in June twenty twenty-two. Has the government found out with the trade? What issues the trade ran into? What are some foreseeable issues? I believe in the long term, the government wants to go paperless. Secretary. The second question would ask the director of buildings to tell us more. On the first question about the Joint Office on Investigating Water Seepage Complaints. This is a joint office under the joint steer of the Development Bureau and the Environment and Ecology Bureau. Over the years, we have reviewed the work. As far as I can recall, there are two areas. Improvements are recommended. The Food and Environmental Department and the Buildings Department take part in joint enforcement. We put the officers from two departments. We put the officers from two departments in the same joint office to improve communication. The second area, use of technology. In the past, it took some time before officers started using technology. Now we get officers to use technology earlier on. So on several points, there is improvement. The director can tell us more in a moment. Ms. Clarice Yu. There are difficulties confronting investigations into water seepage. We've done our best in making use of technology. We're well ahead in using technology in investigating water seepage. The technology cannot be used in some cases, so where possible, we use new technology. We're also using a technology on a pilot basis in more areas. We started off with four areas and now we're using it in twelve areas. This year, we will use new technology in more districts. On workflow improvement, we're always reviewing to see where we can do better. We have received many complaints. I personally review the cases to find ways to do better. That way, in each case, we can find ways to do better. I agree with the member on one point. The government has put a lot of resources into the work. But then the source of water seepage has not been found for many cases. The threshold for enforcement is very high. So from time to time, we encourage property owners to do their part. To find out the source of seepage on their own. Ms. Yu, you have already given us a clear explanation, but you haven't got to the point about the electronic submissions hub. Can you get to that point? On the electronic submissions hub. It took some time for the first stage. We received a third of the plans. Those are the top-side developments. Some owners tell us they want to take one step at a time. Now more plans can be submitted on this platform and we will stay in touch with the applicant. Thank you. Next, Mr. Lau Kwok Fan. O three two. This is about the land-sharing pilot scheme. The scheme has been in place for three years. There are endorsements in principle. Now we're getting into the third year. There are plans. Will the Development Bureau review this pilot scheme? Will the pilot scheme become a regularized scheme? Will there be enhancement? If there are fewer applications than expected, will the scheme be improved? Chairman. We're not getting many applications. So it's premature to be thinking about regularizing the pilot scheme. The scheme, the application will be open up till the end of May. And we want to keep it a pilot scheme for a while and then consider the extent to which we extend the scheme. There's a reason I'm saying that we're thinking about extension. There are some potential applicants in preliminary talks with our team. So there is interest in the trade. So we will consider matters in that direction. Thank you for the clarity. It's supposed to be a three-year pilot scheme. Application closes in May this year. But we don't know what happens next. The pilot scheme may not be regularized just yet, but it may be extended. But do we know when the pilot scheme will be extended? Some people may take their time in submitting the applications. Do we know to which point will the pilot scheme be extended? That way, people can submit their applications early on. Chairman, the member made a good point. There has to be a deadline. Even if we extend the pilot scheme and we cannot extend this for too long. This pilot scheme is about addressing short-term and medium-term land supply shortages. So we, the the extension will not be a very long one. Application closes in May. Before that point, we will make a formal announcement. I look forward to seeing that announcement. Okay, we have a review of the pilot scheme. It's a three-year pilot scheme with a review and people can see where the scheme has worked and what are some issues plaguing the pilot scheme so that we can learn lessons from the pilot scheme. Secretary, please note the member's comment. Next, Mr. Chan Zhi-hong. Thank you. Reply number D E B B P L double O nine. This is about the preparations for setting up a northern metropolis coordination office to take forward the work relating to the northern metropolis. Many members raised similar questions on details about the coordination office, the current progress, the estimated staff establishment and provisions. The government has told us about the preparations. There is something close to my heart and to the heart of other members. The terms of reference of this coordination office and the delineation of duties of this office and other government departments. The reply says that this coordination office will be the overall champion for the overall championing and coordination. It was, the office will strengthen coordination across bureaus, departments for timely delivery of housing, transport, urban infrastructure, ecological conservation, industry developments, covering different sectors, et cetera. Chair. I want to find out what powers would this coordination have? And also accountability. Without coordination, you can, we may simply see officers passing the buck. Secretary, you're on an equal footing with other directors of bureaus. When differences come up, do you have to go to the financial secretary for decision? The last thing we want to see is to have this coordination office becoming simply a senior secretary to the advisory committee on Northern Metropolis and a steering committee of the, on the Northern Metropolis. We do want to see a boost in the speed and quality in the work the government does. At the meeting of the panel on development, many members asked about the coordination office and the role it can play. The power of this office comes from the chief executive. It provides secretarial support to the steering committee. The steer is real. The chief executive provides the views and the views are taken seriously. The head of this coordination office has a clear mandate. The various bureaus have to deliver on what the chief executive has said. Say there's a gap to be filled and there's work for which no party is taking responsibility. And this matter is raised at the coordination office. This coordination office is already working. We have an interim preparatory office on the northern metropolis. It is playing that role. Because this office has been instructions from the chief executive. Mr. Chen, are you happy with your reply? I believe that's the best the secretary can give us. We'll have to see how it goes in the next two to three years. Now, we're talking about key performance indicators, KPIs. In the main reply here. Now, as committed in the twenty twenty-two policy address and implementation plan and action agenda will be formulated this year. You have a blueprint and then you can start following up. It's not just about the coordination office. It's also about the delivery of the initiatives about the northern metropolis. And then we will chase you up on that.
Ms. Carmen Ken, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask about three replies. One. O one three. O five eight. And one O one. Let me start with O one three. It's a question asked by Ms. Chen Yit-Meng. Asked about small house policy, chothong policy and code, um and also the co-development model, the urban rural integration model. Uh it says here, um urban rural integration is one of the planning principles and shined in the northern metropolis development strategy. Um and then they 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 will come to the panel for further repo- uh explanation. But on the small house policy, uh it said in reply that there are certain laws regulating the policy. And and then we have various measures, we uh have host measures to create more land for housing production such as streamlining procedures and so on. And so this this um 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 study in the committee about building, uh about building blocks for indigenous residents. Um so we cannot rule out the possibility, but we're told in reply that there are uh legal con- legal constraints in that. So maybe you need to first formulate the policy and then you can come to this council about, you know, the um uh making possible ding buildings and so on. And then uh next is O five, uh O one O one. That's um the question of by Mr. Tony Chair, he's the conv- convener of the G nineteen. He didn't have enough time to ask his questions, so I will ask the rest of the questions on his behalf. About um the figure, the number of cases of sites cleared. The government say, reply is nine thousand sites clears for from lawful occupation. So is it actually nine thousand sites or it's just a case that the people keep coming back after you've cleared a site? So this nine one nine, uh I don't know, nine one nine, I don't know, is the number of sites cleared or the number of cases? And then in terms of um uh prosecution and conviction, uh that the we, it's not determined enough because there are only um eighteen con- prosecution cases or seventeen convicted cases. So we should be doing more in law enforcement. And what's the observation? My the figure is the prosecution or con- conviction figure so low. And then O five eight, Mr. Uh so so asked about um the um um the the ten-year supply forecast of developer land. And and we we in the reply, we told what government would do. But then when it comes to um land, um formation resource and so on, they say that it's um actually part uh part of the overall effort of government, so it's hard for you to give a breakdown. So i- is it right that you just have existing staff doing the work? You don't have a dedicated team to do the work. So that's why you can't give a breakdown of the uh manpower and whatever. Now about um law enforcement of a lawful occupation of government land, I will ask my colleague to answer. A third question, I will ask the permanent secretary to answer that. The first question on the small house policy. Well, you've actually uh um helped me answer the question. Now, we haven't closed the door to do review with matter of priority. Uh because um this policy is controversial, if we want to review it. First, we talk about um small house land. You can't say that because the uh sites have been reserved, are reserved for small house development. So you could automatically use the site for multi-story ding buildings, but then there is not necessarily a case. It really depends on whether the site is suitable for high-density development, uh in particular in the rural areas. So there are uh uh planning considerations. And even if uh the planning considerations are favorable, that is, we could have high-density development. Then we have to look at public expectation. I think the public in general believe that the small house policy is really for indigenous inhabitants. So they could stay together and say as a village. Uh but then if we then have um high-density, multi-story buildings, then could there be expectations from other members of the community as well? So why are these units specifically exclusively for indigenous residents? What about others? Uh maybe others uh who own houses or in village environment could, in village areas could also um surrender their house for such units. So these are issues we have to consider. So we have first to deal with the land supply and then definitely later on, we will have to review the policy for small houses. On one O one. Um in, we mentioned nine thousand, one thousand cases of clearance from unlawful occupation. That's the, actually, the the unit is cases, not sites. And Ms. Ken was right, that it's true for some of the cases, they involve the same site repeatedly. But of course, these are just a small number of cases. And I mean, we deal with such a size, we will uh first go by cap two twenty-eight. That is the land miscellaneous provisions ordinance will post a notice requiring the reference parties to um clear the site. If they don't do so within the specified period, then we'll follow up. We'll carry out the clearance and then we'll also take out prosecution. But usually most cases, after we have posted the notice and then some parties or either non-parties or reference parties would have cleared the site. But i- i- it's only in for handful of cases that we have to proceed to prosecution. And then when we take up prosecution, we have to follow the um the guidelines of the Department of Justice. Actually, the prosecution threshold is high. First, we need to um be able to identify the person that actually occupies government land unlawfully. So that's why um few cases get to the stage of prosecution. And that's why you see the number of prosecutions, uh uh just um over a dozen cases each. And that's why you see the number of prosecutions, just over a dozen cases each, each year. Well, I'd like to thank Ms. Ken, that you know we are streamlining the relevant legislation. In fact, we have several teams of colleagues involved in the exercise, and they are working really hard. But what we can see is that we can't say that just because we are doing extra work, we will ask for extra resources. So what I'm trying to say is that it's not because we have more work than we have to create new posts. And for legislative amendments exercise, of course, of course, there is a time limit. Maybe it's just this year, all of a sudden we have more work. And then for existing colleagues, maybe they are responsible for the reference policies. So if we ask them to take care of the legislative amendments, that would be the best because they have a better understanding of the background to the bill. They know more about, so they know how they could enhance the bill. So that's why we are using existing resources to take up such work. Thank you. If I may remind members, if you ask long questions and you exceed the time limit, then I have to see whether there's still time left in a particular session. If we don't have enough time, then I won't allow you to go on for too long. Mr. Chan Kapiu, can I, can I go beyond the time limit? Well, you can still do so now. Two questions mostly mainly. Oh three four and oh eight oh. The Development Projects Facilitation Office will help private sector projects to proceed more quickly and for the projects to be completed more quickly. Now, since 2020, some sixty-plus projects on the list. Even for Kun Tong, where there's already dense development, there are some six sites included. And some of the sites are actually in Yao Tong. Perhaps it has to do with former industrial sites or vacant sites with some changes in land uses. So my question is for these four sites in Yao Tong. Are they all the, do they, do they represent all the vacant private sites in Yao Tong? Or sites that can be used for housing development? If that's the case, does it mean that we could have fully connected harbor front common art from Lei Yimun to Chakwala? Because now along some of the sections, we see private sites. So that's why there cannot be full connection of the harbor front promenade. So for fourteen, project number fourteen to seventeen, do they cover all the existing vacant private sites? So that means we eventually will have a fully connected harbor front promenade. And, and oh eight oh is question asked by Mr. Stanley Mm from from the FTU. So which is about subdivided units or slight public housing. Now, we see the light public housing projects to go ahead. So we may be able to cut down the number of SDU units. So we, there will be safe transitional housing operated by the government. That's what light public housing is about. Well, I think you should do more at the same time to face out the SDUs in appalling conditions. Now, I can see that the government's done something. You have carried out over one thousand six hundred inspections on units where you suspect there are SDUs. And there's a high percentage, some two hundred and seventy-three SDUs, where you have issued notice to replace them, so over ten percent. And then you've also issued removal orders for sixty-plus cases. So now, we are definitely going to have light public housing, which you do more. Instead of just inspecting one thousand six hundred units, can you inspect, say, six thousand units a year? So that you could face out the undesirable SDUs in the near term. Now, you, you inspected sixteen hundred units with two hundred units. You issued orders that said mean that for the remaining fourteen hundred units, they are safe. They are in good fine suitable living condition is the case. Now, when you decide which SDUs to remove, do you have any experience to share with us as to help us? What are the criteria for determining whether the housing condition is decent or not? Well, the first question, the Permanent Secretary. Second question, the Director of Buildings, Ms. Doris Ho. Yeah, on your first question, you mentioned the four projects. Those are not the only private development projects in Yao Tong. Now, if you are concerned about the Yao Tong harbor front, then it's a project number fourteen and fifteen Tong Yun Street. But there are other private housing projects to be taken forward. Then from projects fourteen and fifteen, you can see that we are turning former industrial sites into housing sites, and that will help to promote redevelopment in that area. And then we, when we work on the outline zoning plans, we will see there are certain sites that are by the harbor front. It's not, it's not just Tong Yun Street, but all the in Yao Tong. I, I think that in our plan, we have reserved about twenty meters wide of harbor front promenade. That means developers must go by that requirement in their own housing development. So they have to allow a twenty meter wide harbor front promenade. So in answer to your question, yes, these is part of our plan. Thank you.
Ms. Clarice Yu on subdivided units. Some units were inspected. Actionable irregularities were found. Inspections happened, and then we compiled the reports. For 2022 as a whole, we issued one hundred and fifty-seven removal orders. But that represents a small percentage of SDUs, so we take a risk-based approach. This means for law enforcement, we look at the structural safety of buildings and fire safety of those buildings. If we see structural or fire safety risks, then those are actionable irregularities. For SDUs without such irregularities, those SDUs do not contravene the building's ordinance. One comment, Chairman. For all inspections, safe or not, those cases should be referred to the inland revenue department. I believe those property owners fail to file their tax returns properly. Next, Dr. So Chiang Ming. I thank the government for the detailed reply to my questions. Reply number D E V B oh five nine. Some follow-up questions for me. The reply says there will be task forces, departments to be set up. There's a task force on the Northern Metropolis. And then within this year, there will be a Northern Metropolis Coordination Office to provide secretarial support for the Steering Committee and also the Advisory Committee on the Northern Metropolis. How does the government ensure no overlapping in the work done by the various offices and task forces? And how can the government speed up the work on the Northern Metropolis? So can the government tell us, the task force, the Coordination Office, how do they delineate their work? Second question, D E V B P L oh five eight. The reply says this, in the new territories, there are a thousand six hundred hectares of brownfield sites. Over sixty percent will gradually be developed for high-density housing and other uses. The twelve brownfield with high development potential have been shortlisted. Can the government be more specific? And the government give us a time table and the roadmap? Within this financial year, how many brownfield sites will be resumed for development? Chair. For the first question on the Northern Metropolis, Mr. Yao will tell us more. On the brownfield clusters, we found those sites over the past couple of years for public housing units. We're taking forward the engineering design detailed study in terms of a timetable. The thirty units will contribute towards the housing to be come on stream the next ten years. Mr. Vic Yao. There are four bodies on the Northern Metropolis. First, there is the Steering Committee on the Northern Metropolis chaired by the Chief Executive. We have many Secretaries of Development. The Steering Committee provides high-level steer within the government. The secretary has also touched on this in her reply to Mr. Chen. Now, the Advisory Committee on Northern Metropolis. Professionals from the community and also people from the business community are involved. The Advisory Committee provides suggestions and advices on the Northern Metropolis. So this is an advisory body involving the government and those outside the government. Now, there is a task force for collaboration on the Northern Metropolis Development Strategy. The task force exchanges ideas for Shenzhen. So the task force works with the mainland authorities on the Coordination Office on Northern Metropolis. They will set up this office under the Development Bureau. The preparations are underway. Just then, the secretary also mentioned this. So this will undertake the groundwork. With instructions from the Steering Committee, the Coordination Office will undertake the work. We do the coordination along with other bureaus and departments. I need to draw a line here. Dr. Chau Man Kong will speak for the first round, and then three members will speak for the second round. I will see how much time we have left. First, Dr. Chau Man Kong. Three questions, oh four two, oh four eight, and oh four oh. On Chongquan No Area one three seven and Area one three two, the plans for the six obnoxious facilities. We talked about this at the panel level. I don't get this. The government has listened to the views from the local stakeholders, but decided to go ahead with those facilities. The facilities affect not just Chongquan No, but also four or five kilometers off the shore from Hang Fa Chun. I struggle to make sense of this. Chongquan No Area one three seven, near the shore, no one's there. Why build those facilities in densely populated parts? I made a suggestion for Ti Chang Chow and Tin Ha Shan, Tin Ha Ngao. You can minimize the impact when you put the facilities there. That is also very cost-effective. The Director of Marine mentioned there would be an impact on the sea. But then in Chongquan No, the passage rate is nearer. There's also an impact at the sea. Having the facilities there will have a major impact on the local residents. Four hundred thousand residents of Chongquan No. The government needs to think this matter through. We want the best for Hong Kong with every development. But then we have to avoid creating social tensions and adding to the social cost. That's my first point. Oh four oh. On the Northern Metropolis, the government said it would set aside a hundred billion dollars as a dedicated fund. I believe that will be far from enough for taking forward the Northern Metropolis development. Will the government issue bonds? So can we have a timetable about the bond issuance? So first, I would like to hear from the government about Area one three seven and one three two. Ms. Doris Ho, or will Secretary, will you respond to that yourself? Chongquan No Area one three two is a contentious project. We need sites right next to the sea surfing residents in Kowloon East, Island East, and also New Territories East. We need facilities, incinerators next to the sea. That's why we identified Chongquan No Area one three two. We want to put the facilities there because that's right by the sea. That part is also close to the major expressways. We can stay out of the Chongquan Old Town Center. So for refuse facilities and concrete fetching plants, we want to stay out of the Chongquan Old Town Center and the site right by the sea. That's our consideration. We can understand the public reaction to such facilities. They want those facilities far away from residential areas. But you can take a look at the latest design and arrangements. Those are not polluting facilities. We're happy to explain the matter to the residents and district councils, and we're happy to take them on the visit to those facilities. I can see some residents will remain resistant to the proposal. We don't think the facilities will be polluting, but we can pledge that in our future studies, we can try to go further in slope cutting to reduce the extent of reclamation. So that less of it will be, less of the facilities will be visible. But I'm calling for public understanding on this point. We want the public to understand why we're taking forward the proposals. If we haven't explained things clearly enough, we're happy to explain the matters further. Now, turning to the Northern Metropolis. There are different parts to the Northern Metropolis development. So there are several studies. For each aspect, we don't have the specific cost yet. The Financial Secretary said that an amount of money would be earmarked. But we have to take a multipronged approach when it comes to the cost. After each study is done, we will brief the legislature on the result. I've drawn the line. Three members will speak for the second round. Due to time constraints, I will give each member three minutes. You're asking follow-up questions, so please stay focused in the questions. First, Ms. Chan Hockfong, double oh five. It's a question about Sihou Wan. In Tongchung, there are also other new developments. There will be new population intake. The reply says this, there will be an MTR station at Sihou Wan with minimal impact on the traffic. But for Tongchung's future development, we cannot rely on the MTR alone. The MTR there is already at capacity. There's a Qingma Bridge. It shares the bridge, shares the rail with the MTR. There's a bottleneck. You don't have another outlet for the traffic to go to the urban areas. You put more people in Tongchung, and then there are no new rail links. Then that becomes a major problem. Would there be a new rail link connecting Tongchung and the urban area? Chairman. Chairman. We don't have any plan to put a new rail link in Tongchung leading to the urban area. But we do have plans for the new artificial islands leading, linking to the Sunny Bay, to Hongshou Q, to Hong Kong Island. That's the plan we have in mind. Coming back to Tongchung. And we're not expecting the M T R there to be the only traffic link. There is the road P one works. And then for Chatla, Kok and Chu Moon, there's a link road. In the future, there will be Route eleven in New Territories West and there will also be the Chu Moon bypass. So that's another option for Tongchung residents. We want to provide different options, different routes.
Well, Secretary, you must see this. Many Tongchung residents now go to the urban areas for work. Every morning, the trains are packed and they can't add more frequencies. Well, actually, the airport express lane is not yet running at its peak. If that's the case, then there's no way that Tongchung Line could cope with the passenger load. So people have to go to the urban areas for work and this, this problem will only worsen in the next few years. Yes, having heard Mr. Chen's views, please see what more you can do on transportation arrangement. Of course, it's under the portfolio of another bill, but please pass on the views. Mr. Andrew Lam, thank you. I'd like to follow up on O five one, asked by Mr. Stanley M on brownfield sites. Yes, I could, I do appreciate that the government has done a lot for affected brownfield site operators. But then I'd like to make two points. In the reply, we told that in the past few years, we resumed about thirty hectares of brownfield sites. You've done much, you've listed out all the sites and we appreciate that. But then you're only able to help with repositioning for about two point two hectares of land. Um, not, it's just less than one tenth. So that means for ninety percent of the brownfield sites displaced, is the case that the operators don't have any intention to continue with the operation? It's just that, or is it just that the government is not able to help them? And if the government can't help them, then what happens to these brownfield operators? And what about the, these brownfield operations, site operations? How do they affect our, um, and our industries altogether? I understand that the multi-story industrial buildings may help to some extent, but what about brownfield site operators affected and that cannot, and who cannot be proficient? So, so, so what, what can you do to help them? Because you can't ask them to close up, close their business and ask them to resume again later. It would be difficult. And in the past few years, that's the first question, second question. Um, in the past few years, you clear some thirty hectares of brownfield sites. And then for thirty, uh, for about three hectares, they, you have paid up already for the compensation. And for another four point seven hectares, you're going to make the payment soon. So that means there are about twelve hectares of land left. Is it all government land or are there private operations that have yet to receive payments? They may be waiting for the payment, waiting in line for the payment. And maybe we're talking about years rather than months when the operators will receive the payment. Of course, it will seriously affect the operators and it also has a bearing on the government's financial commitment. So can you, can you tell us more about the arrangement? Secretary, thank you for the two questions. Well, we see that the press have quoted our reply, but it seems that there is some minor misunderstanding. In the reply, we say that from twenty nineteen on, for several years, we've resumed about thirty hectares of brownfield sites. And for ninety percent of cases, we have dealt with them. By having dealt with them, it means that we have already made, paid the compensation to the operators. It's not as some in the press say that for thirty hectares, only less than ten percent have received payment. Rather, it's the case that ninety percent have received payment. And then we also mentioned in one particular year, how many cases we've dealt with. That's all. It's not the total number. And then the member said that we've cleared thirty hectares of land, but few have been repositioned. Well, it's true, for some of the operators who have received payment, they choose not to continue the business probably because they are getting old. And then for others, they have used their own means to high rent private land or make other arrangements on their own, so they don't even need to go through the time planning process. And if they need to go through the time plan process, they need to assistance, they would approach the lands department. So, but in some cases, they were able to make their own arrangements. That's why they did not come to us for assistance. Last, Mr. Tony Che, thank you. If I could follow up on Mr. Chen Hockfong's question, reply number O O three. Aging, the aging population issue. Now, it's, it's in reply that for five percent of public housing, there will be welfare facilities, including facilities for the elderly. Now, in the past, we didn't have sufficient land supply. I asked a question too before. We want to promote aging in place. So elderly friendly facilities actually are rare. The Housing Society, of course, has been providing such facilities, but only on small scale. Now, we hope that for this term of the government, you'll be able to address this issue. For at least, hopefully, you'll be able to address the issue of insufficient land supply and then you could have early planning. Hopefully, you can encourage the private sector to provide more elderly friendly facilities, so we could promote aging in place. Because it seems that for private housing projects, there are no specific considerations for the elderly. For example, barrier free access. It's actually more than barrier free access. The elderly may need certain facilities. So they are able to take care of themselves better and I think these facilities are essential. Now, the Housing Society has been providing such facilities, but you know, we can't just leave it to a single organization. Rather, the government should promote the private developers to do, to provide these facilities. That's all I'd like to say. Secretary, a brief response, please. On building design and how we can make it, make buildings more elderly friendly. I agree with the member, there's room for us to do more. Currently, we have been doing this. Now, there's the green review of the green beam by the Buildings Department. So how can we offer G F A concession? That is, if an applicant is able to provide facilities for the elderly, then it's easier for the applicant to receive G F A concession. Now, when the whole scheme is published, then you'll be able to see the details. That's what we have in mind anyway. But for existing buildings, how can we encourage provision of more elderly friendly facilities? Where we'll have to work together with the Labor and Welfare Bureau. Uh, I, I agree, we need to give more thought to this aspect. So that's the end of the session. We'll come back at five thirty, five ten for the session on works. Thank you.